This is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. It is Monday, June 5th. We are in Apple Seeds Restaurant. I'll read the Lemmonster School Committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster." And abiding by our rules, it says, "At the beginning of each school committee meeting or with permission of the chair, citizens may address the committee on items on the agenda, on or any other issues related to overall school operations." And you'll have two minutes. Would anyone like to address the school committee? If so, Bella is the first name on here. And Ms. Chris will keep the count for you. Enter your microphone.
My name is Isabella Bible. I live on 178 Fifth Street. Hello, faculty and school committee. I'm here on behalf of the students of Lemmonster High School, who not only agree with the idea to share one color at graduation, but want to continue doing so for future classes. My name is Isabella Bible. I, with other 438 students in the class of 2023, graduated last Saturday, all wearing blue. As you all know, the subject of caps and gowns was a hot topic for a few students and staff. I'll admit, when I first heard of the change, I wanted to wear white, simply because I expected it to be hot. What I hadn't realized was that many of my fellow students didn't want to wear white, because it represented a question that had tortured them their whole lives. Would they graduate as a man or a woman? 191 students didn't respond to the survey regarding caps and gowns. And 36 didn't care, so the majority wanted to wear blue and white. Thankfully, Dr. Romano came to the same realization that holding a majority vote for an issue that negatively impacts the minority is not the way to do things. I have written statements to share with you from an anonymous trans student of LHS. I knew I was trans for a long time, but I had never had a word to put towards what I was feeling. It wasn't until my sophomore year at LHS that I had officially come out and was proud of who I was and how that affected me and continuing to grow to this day. While the support from teachers was great and very appreciated for my mental health, it started to decline over the years, partially due to the fact that I was different from the other boys in my school. There came the meeting for caps and gowns, and I heard the gendered options. In that moment, I was not used to the word scared, but that's what I felt like. On my day, where I could be seen and heard by my friends and family, a moment I would forever remember, I would be that girl that stuffed into the closet and never wanted to talk about again. I would have to wear a white gown while all the boys I envied for their masculinity would wear blue. The gendered caps and gowns made my heart sink into my stomach, and I couldn't help but get an overwhelming feeling and sense that I was alone again. I would forever be who I didn't want to be. And on that one day, I would never repeat, it felt painful, sad. I was confused, and the depression was chasing after me. And throughout a moment of clarity, I skipped graduation. I had my parents send an email to confirm it, just to avoid having my choice taken away from me, being separated into a category I swore I was out of. All right.
Thank you, Bella. Next is Elijah? Elia? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Breen. I live at 6 Jonathan Rivers Lane, and I graduated from Lemmonster Center for Excellence on June 1st. As a trans student myself, and with my class doing all the same color green, nobody was hurt by the color of our gowns. And I know that if I was forced to wear one color representing femininity, I would not have felt good at all. I would have wanted to skip graduation. As a trans student, I have faced a lot in these past years, where I went to both LHS and LCE. I have been cornered in a bathroom for being in the quote-unquote "wrong" bathroom, and I feared for my safety. There have been many times where I end up in the hospital because the mental strain of what I've been going through. And I would just like to read, "According to the American Psychological Association, gender dysphoria, as defined in the DSM-5, is a gender identity disorder that causes distress arising from a sense of mismatch or incongruence that one may have about one's experienced gender and one's assigned gender. This is a very real medical and diagnosable condition. Many people argue that white is just a color, but in this case, it's not. It symbolizes women. Having a trans man wear white or a trans woman wear blue will worsen gender dysphoria, leading to very serious side effects and consequences. According to the APA, gender dysphoria causes anxiety, depression, suicidal thoughts, and suicide, all of which I have experienced." According to the National Library of Medicine, trans people are 31 to 50% more likely to commit suicide. A member of Lemmonster's school committee made a Facebook post where they called out Dr. Romano's decision to wear all blue gowns and wore white gown to graduation in protest. They argued that Dr. Romano's decision to have all blue gowns in order to ensure transgender students would not be dysphoric and suicidal on graduation day was simply gender politics rearing its ugly head. And they can absolutely argue that, but nobody can argue against facts. Fact number one: gender dysphoria is a real and serious condition.
Thank you, and congratulations. That was a nice graduation at City Hall. And I learned a lot about the students at LCE. Thank you. Rachel is next. Hi, Rachel.
Hello. My name is Rachel Magliozzi. I live on 21 Glendale Street. My friend Emily Valeri could not be here, but I am reading a statement that she made. Hello, my name is Emily Valeri, and I'm a female graduated senior at Lemmonster High School. When Dr. Romano announced that the gowns would be changed from their normal gendered colors, I was both shocked and relieved. I was shocked because I had not previously known of the gendered colors. Segregation based on gender is something that I have always stood against because it is simply unfair. We were the only high school around here that adhered to anti-cata gender norms of the past and that places a stain on Lemmonster's shining reputation. The relief came when I realized that the decision made by Dr. Romano had possibly saved the lives of my friends. I am friends with multiple transgender individuals and have witnessed or heard several of them attempting to take their own life due to the pain of not being seen as their preferred gender. I feel as though keeping the gendered gown colors would have only worsened their struggles and forced them into an impossible choice. They would have been forced to choose between presenting as their birth gender and betraying it and betray their identity, possibly leading to a declining mental state and another attempt on their life, or present as their preferred gender and risk getting kicked out of their very own home simply for being who they truly are. Gendered gowns hold only negatives. As individuals who are not trans, gendered gowns have no benefits. There is no plus side to being separated into men and women. There are only downsides, there are only possibilities of more children losing their lives to suicide. I believe Dr. Romano has made the right choice in abolishing the gendered gowns and helping us all be united in our sea of blue. We're the Blue Devils, not the blue and white devils. And Dr. Romano did his duty to ensure that there would be no more empty chairs at graduation. Thank you for listening to me, and I encourage you all to keep the ungendered gowns.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Emily, right? Valeri? Okay. Thank you, Rachel. The history is fine. I wouldn't give you a... You don't have to give you a number. Brianna? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Brianna Patel, 85 Howard Street. From my understanding, all school committee members are supposed to have a nonpartisan stance if they are to represent the committee. Unfortunately, this was not the case on Saturday, because one member decided to have a silent protest on the single-gendered colors this year at the graduation ceremony. They were clearly making an anti-trans conservative statement by saying that the school allowed gender politics to rear its ugly head. I believe his statement would have been okay had he not been sitting in the stands... Had he been sitting in the stands with the rest of the public. However, this was not the case, because he was on the field with the rest of the committee, therefore representing the committee and disrespecting the norm of non-partisanship. He doesn't actually care about the students or the girls, but more about reinforcing the status quo and upholding outdated gender norms. I'm disappointed that I have to have this conversation, Lemmonster MA. This isn't Florida. Gender politics are gonna be poking its ugly head in places, because it's important to discuss, especially in a progressive state. Also, Lemmonster is very diverse. It prides itself on diversity, and the mayor has often made this a talking point in his own speeches on various occasions. He's even raised an LGBTQ flag and spoke about... Spoke up around Pride Month multiple times in the past. Why are we upholding such traditional conservative norms which fight against this belief? In doing so, we put closeted trans students in a compromised situation. They have to choose between outing themselves to a potentially unsupervised family or being uncomfortable in a gown that doesn't match their identity. Finally, I want to address the elephant in the room. I really don't think it's a good look for the school district, the school committee, and the individual in particular to have a cis straight white man walking around in a white gown trying to push conservative and traditional values. Thank you for your time.
Anna? Rosemary? Don't give the number of your house. You don't have to do that. Just which street.
My name is Rosemary Anderson. I live on Green Street here in Lemmonster. I'm here tonight to mourn the death of the integrity of the Lemmonster School Committee. It appears that one of the members, who was elected to represent the interests of the schools, put false culture war politics over the interests of the students. What he called protesting is an inane waste of time and effort, and it demonstrates what could at best be called apathy. It's the job of the school committee to focus on the issues that truly matter to the students, but what one of your own has done is take the spotlight away from issues that actually matter and brought it instead to a non-existent problem and caused a false moral panic over gender politics and canceling students. I hope the committee members overwhelmed with shame as they sit on the board actively doing nothing to solve problems that actually face our city, instead spend their effort on non-existent social issues. I applaud that individual for manipulating the public into voting for you so you could waste their time as a living. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lily, go next.
Hello, Lilian Wyckoff, Revolution Drive. There are many impressive and brave transgender and non-binary students that have spoken on the issue of trans exclusion, so I'd like to speak on a slightly different facet of the issue. So, let's talk about colors. For generations, white is a color that has been used to symbolize purity and innocence. It is a color that has been used to strip women of their individuality, to separate them as others, and to separate them from the boys. On a note of practicality, white robes turn sheer in the rain, which would have been an issue on Saturday. Do you want our students in sheer robes? I don't think so. Now, let's talk about blue. Blue is our color. We are the Blue Devils. We bleed blue. This is the color that unites us as a school. This is a non-issue, and the matter is decided. We wore blue robes on Saturday, and it went fantastically. We looked like a class graduating together. Additionally, I'd like to address what this action by the member of the school committee really was: a stunt for a campaign. This member participated in the culture war and blatantly and selfishly used our graduation as a ploy for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Valeri. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Yes? Just your name and street.
My name is Wendy Anderson. I live on Green Street in Lemmonster. I'm the parent of a recent graduate of LCE. My daughter also happens to be a young trans person. She's among the lucky kids who get to be out in their authentic selves at home and feel safe and supported. Not every child has that luxury. Not everyone who is transgender is ready to be fully out, and not everyone who is transgender can be their authentic self safely. And as to the comment on social media that it was canceling girls, I just want to tell you, as a girl and the mother of girls, I promise you, single-color gowns at graduation do not make us girls feel canceled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the committee? Once again, one last time? Anybody online? Okay, one last time? You sure? All right, we close this portion of the meetings. Thank you. We'll now move on to Communications Superintendent.
Yes, you have one in here from Keystone Educational Collaborative. We are members, so you have to be notified that they have purchased 143 Jocelyn Street.
Well, they haven't purchased it yet.
Right, so they...
They're just in...
So, it's just information.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Superintendent's report?
I think we're gonna have the students do their report, too.
Before we get into that, Matt, I just want to take a moment. As most of you know, Matt graduated with the class 2023 on Saturday, so congratulations to Matt. Matt and Gold were our first-ever student reps on this committee, and it took a lot of hard work to get them here, and they helped create a wonderful model to go moving forward. So, we do have a little gift of appreciation from that angle, the nice Lemmonster Blue Devils jacket.
And a Coach's jacket.
Does that mean you have to call you Coach now? Now that you have a Coach's jacket?
So, with that being said, and Matt's graduation, we have two brand-new student reps who are gonna be joining us officially at our next meeting, who are gonna give our student report today. Tyler from LHS, come on up to the table.
Hold on, hold on a second. So, maybe they're all the members that would like to... I didn't know this was gonna happen, so this is new to me, but Matt, I appreciate you coming tonight.
I think I might have told them that I was gonna present. They... They're welcome to, but they...
No, 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 no. Not about that, but about... I didn't know you were gonna come, and I didn't know you were gonna present.
Well, I don't miss it just because I'm out of here. You can't get rid of me that easily.
There may be other members that wanna just thank you and acknowledge that came to the committee open-minded, and for me at least, it was refreshing to hear someone speak about issues very plainly and descriptive and fairly. Had done some thinking about it, representing all sides, just kind of putting it all out there for us to kind of, hey, you know, I didn't think of that. And that's... It's a good approach to life, I think. And so, I think on, at least on my end, I enjoyed the animated approach to things and your energy, and again, your open mind and this willingness to listen to everybody and kind of try to blend it all down and boil it down to the point where you can make a good presentation on all fronts. So, at least on my behalf, I'd just like to thank you and I know for all the members that feel the same way, but...
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you for coming. Go ahead, Emily.
I was just gonna say, I wanted to thank both you and Gold. I know she can't be here, but you both were very inspirational, and added a lot of value to our meeting, so thank you so much. We appreciate it. And congratulations, and good luck.
I'm glad that you needed this.
Josh?
Matt, I just want to say I appreciated your perspective, I think, and Gold's perspective. I think it's important to have the student voice here in the discussion at all times. And personally, I liked the way that you didn't back down from your opinion, ever. Even when we would go around and around and around and around, you'd always make sure that you came in and held your own and stood up with your opinion. And that's something you should hold on to the rest of your life. Yeah.
It means a lot. Thank you.
But I appreciate your presence, and I appreciated the both input so far this year. Thank you.
So, we're gonna have a peaceful transfer of power here.
I mean, they're...
Hopefully.
It's gonna do great. I've met both of them separately and together, and they're great.
Well, thank you a lot.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the kind words, and I appreciate this position. I've had a great time. I've enjoyed all the meetings. I've learned a lot, and I'm really thankful that I've had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So, obviously, graduation happened over the weekend. I don't have to go over that again. Yeah, it was a good time speaking to the seniors. I think it was nice, nice. Lot of great speakers. Yeah, good. So, in terms of academics, would you guys... Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah.
This is it.
So, Tyler is our new representative from the high school, and then Marcus will come up. He's our new representative from CTEI.
Yep, my name's Tyler, the new Matt, so I'll be here.
Got big shoes to fill.
Yeah, yeah, I hear. So, over the weekend, like Matt said, graduation happened. It was rainy and wet for you people who were there. I was there, too. It was. It was true. Yeah, it was. That's true, yeah. We were cleaning off the table, the chairs, and he said it's technically not raining in Lemmonster, so... But other than that, moving on to academics. This week, freshmen have Biology MCAS. They're taking it tomorrow and Wednesday. So, those are the first few periods of the school. Juniors have been engaging in their civic action project in their history classes. This is a project that's required by law and a requirement for graduation, so every history class is conducting these civic action projects. I think some of you have gone to see some of them. I think that's true. Undergraduate awards will be held on Tuesday, June 13th. That's 6:30 in the LHS auditorium. And then lastly, final exams will be held the week of June 19th, with the holiday on the 19th and the last day of school being the 23rd. On to Lemmonster Athletics. So, LHS teams continue to have great success throughout the year. I'm gonna go one by one. So, LHS softball. Number 10 Lemmonster beat number 23 Masconimate.
You said it.
I think. It's a tough... What is it? You sure? All right, yeah, that's somewhere on the case. All right.
We beat them. We beat them.
Yeah. So, they beat them last Thursday, 9 to 3, and they're advancing to the Round of 16 in the state tournament. And they'll be playing sometime this week. Boys' baseball beat Tantascor last Wednesday, 13 to 5, to win the Central Mass D1 championship. They'll be playing again tonight against Silver Lake at Doyle at 6:30, so should be playing. Yeah, a few minutes. Number 10 Lemmonster's Boys Volleyball beat North Middlesex and won the Central Mass Athletic Directors Championship. They'll enter the D2 state tournament, Round of 16. They'll be playing number 7 Greater New Bedford away today at 5:30, so they should be playing now. And then Girls Across won Central Mass Class A championship, beating Algonquin last week. The number 5-ranked Lemmonster is facing number 28 Oliver Adams today in the Round of 32 at 4 at Doyle, so they probably... Good, good, that's good. Yeah, yeah. And then for Clubs at LHS, Sewing Club did a food drive for Ginny's Food Pantry. Many other clubs are during the end-of-the-year celebrations. Student Council recently elected new officers, so they had their first meeting last Thursday. And then NHS also elected their new officers a few weeks ago. And then elections for class officers will be held this week, with speeches being, I think, either Thursday or Friday. So, yeah, yeah. So, that's it. I don't know how this... Great funds, but...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Nice to meet you guys.
Got big shoes to fill there. All right.
Hi, my name is Marcus Tomes. I am the new CTEI representative for this year, so, you know...
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So, there isn't really much to report on, you know. End of the year, had to, you know, pick up some crumbs from Mr. Kind, but, you know, so... There's a Granite Street House addition. Carpentry is close to finishing. HVAC is adding many splits to it, so you know, that's really nice, really nice project for them. The co-op continues to grow exponentially. It's doing really well. 79 new students within the past year, which is amazing. The Electrical Shop just added their 16th new student co-op. Let's see what else. And yeah, we wish all our recently graduated seniors the best as they, you know, leave our school and prepare for the real world.
When they have the open house, how many students, do you know? I mean, offhand, how many students enrolled in CTEI as a result?
So, for me, how many students I saw there, it was... It's more than you expect. It's like almost, I would say, 100, I think?
I don't know. That's good. No, good.
Yeah.
And if somebody came through, even if you get 10% of that...
Right, right, right. You know, being in CTEI myself, it's a really good experience for, you know, preparing yourself, you know, a new skill, skill that you can use for the real world. It's pretty cool, pretty cool. I'm in culinary here. So, I always see this table set up. You know, I'm never here. This is my first time being here. You know, always sweeping up after the cookies.
That's definitely Sal. I even have a cookie.
Well, thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
And now we got Presentations and Discussions. Introduction of... Is it Bevan Papley?
It is.
Our new Johnny Appleseed principal.
Yes, so we're very excited. Bevan, if you could come forward. Thank you. To put a name and a face together, Bevan has been an employee of ours for over 22 years, an exemplar teacher for many of those. She has helped cultivate professional development, move curriculum forward. She has always been a go-to girl for all of us, so we've always appreciated that. She's been... How many years assistant principal?
This is year four as assistant principal. I was at Skyview for my first year and then went back to Johnny Appleseed for three years, past three years, so...
She's been there. She is a wealth of knowledge about JA and will be a wonderful community builder, staff builder. She was... She stood above all other candidates through the interview process. Brandon was a part of that as well. So, I wanted to make sure that everybody, after successful negotiations, meets our new principal.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Really... Oh, yeah.
Well, there's always things. I mean, no matter who you are, where you stand in the hierarchy, there's always things that you see that you would want to do as the fun gets sort of ended off, so that's all. We can never help you with that.
Thank you.
At least on the city side, all our departments are always willing to help us. I know we have to trim the brush back, backside with a...
Yes, please. Maybe a parking lot. We've talked about that a few times.
Try to do one school a year, so cookies keep coming. You know, the Johnny Appleseed cookies. And next year is the 250th birthday between Appleseed, so we expect big things.
Okay. Looking on that. Yes, the playground. Yes, yes. We're very excited about that. Now, JA is moving in an awesome direction right now. I just am excited to keep the momentum going. And I've had an awesome mentor in Patty King, so I just feel like I'm... Yes, I feel like I'm ready to go, so thank you.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, get to work.
And it just keeps getting sweeter and sweeter here. It's Chotwell presentation.
Yes. Favorite.
Favorite presentation. I told them, I said, if they brought cookies and food, it's a bribery work. It works, it works, right?
Thank you for having us tonight. Kyle with us?
Kyle's with you.
Kyle's pretty good at this. He's a cracker, Jack. There it is. Thank you, Kyle.
There we go.
Security updates.
All right, 14th year. It seems like yesterday, back in 2009. Next slide. There we go. Chotwell's team and myself, Michelle Palladino. Michelle Palladino's been with us since 2017. She actually got a promotion this year, so she'll be moving on for her new career path.
Good for you, it's for you, Chris.
An RD with us back in 2017. She became Assistant Director in 2021. She did a fantastic job, and that was recognized. And she'll be running her own account at a nearby district. So, we're gonna say farewell to her today. But we're also gonna welcome our new person next week, Jackie Kleiman. She's our new Assistant Director. We'll be starting next Monday. She'll have a few weeks with Michelle. And the rest of our team is Megan Monet and Chris Callahan.
Did you do that?
Oh. Oh, that threw me off. Tonight's agenda: Program highlights. We're gonna talk about universal free school meals, Community CEP. We're gonna talk about participation, upgrades in the kitchen equipment, the 2023-24 financials, and the 23-24 challenges of this year. Some program highlights for this year. We received $116,000 from a supply chain assistance from the USDA. That was due to, you know, inflation and food costs rising, so they pitched in and helped us out a little. We've also put in over half a million dollars investing back into our program from the proceeds that we had this year. Amongst the big one was the high school renovations, and I'm sure some of you took a tour with us a few months back when it was finished, back in December. We've also purchased many pieces of equipment, upgraded many pieces of equipment around the district: ovens, washers, dryers, tables, refrigerators, freezers, garbage disposals. We've installed dishwashers, heating cabinets, so we've done quite a bit, and we've got quite a bit of small wares as well. Couple other things we've done. Michelle actually put this program together. We've had two UMass dietetic interns this year. Previously, we've always had one, but Michelle added another one this year. With Michelle leaving, we're gonna continue that program with our new Assistant Director, and she's done a fabulous job with that program as well. We've also hired two CTEI students this year for our co-op program. We hope to continue that next year. The only stumbling block that we have in our kitchen, they do have to be 18 years old to work in the kitchen, but we found a couple. And then we brought them on, and they were wonderful employees for us. They worked every other week with us, and they were a great help as well. We've also performed over 30 events in Lemmonster, you know, from educational and classroom, student choice programs, food tastings, discovery chicken... Chicken. Yeah, kitchens as well. Universal Free, all right, that is a, um, program that the USDA in Massachusetts has had for the past three years, means every student in Massachusetts gets to, receives a breakfast and lunch at no charge. That program hopefully is going to continue. Governor Haley did propose funding for it for this year. The House of Representative Massachusetts also, um, put it, proposed it as well, and they took it one step further. They actually want to make it a permanent thing in Massachusetts. Uh, but the Senate in Ways Committee meeting, uh, excuse me, Means Committee, um, did not put it in their funding, but not that it's over, they're gonna talk through it and hopefully, you know, that will, um, progress into next years, but we probably won't find out for a couple of months, so. We hope to get more information. Once we get that information, we will release it to you right away. So our backup plan, if we do not get that, is our C E P, which, uh, the Parent Information Center has been doing a great job of keeping this, um, up to date with us. And what C E P is, is basically the same thing as Universal Free. It's just finance, the, the, the students won't recognize anything. What it is, is it's, it's a burden on, um, the Food Service Department. It's just different financials, how that works. Um, Lemmonster currently is over the forty percent threshold. Um, the Massachusetts wanted to make it a twenty-five percent over the threshold. And what that is, is means that you can apply for a C E P if you're over forty percent. And with your, uh, direct certified. And we are over forty percent. We were actually forty-four last year when we did this. Our numbers have increased, and so we're going to reapply for C E P this year. Uh, it went up to about fifty-four percent, um, and they give us a multiplier of one point six, so it's gonna drive us up to eighty-six percent. Uh, a, a free rate that we would get reimbursed for. Right now, we're at seventy. So with that said, um, like I said, the Parent Information Center, Jen and, uh, Tina are really working hard. Um, getting all that information into the state, um, so we could, uh, move forward and hopefully get these numbers, so we do have a backup plan if we do not get the universal free. This is, um, the thing I did, uh, the participation through, uh, uh, the thirtieth of April. Uh, just shows you what each school has been doing and where we are district-wide. Seventy-five percent district-wide for lunches and thirty-three percent, um, for breakfast. Uh, seventy-five is actually a pretty good number, you know, compared to other districts. We want to try to hit that eighty mark next year. And we would really like to drive that breakfast, uh, percentage up to at least forty, even fifty percent would be great. So we, we do want to drive those numbers because the more, higher the percentage, that means the more kids that are eating, so. Uh, and these are our end of the year financials. These are our estimates. Um, you know, talks about, uh, about, uh, total meals, the total meals turn into revenue in the next lines. And that total revenue line. And then we, and however, of course, we have our expenses, and we just subtract our expenses by, well, subtract the revenue from the expenses and that gives us a return. That return is an estimate, but that's pretty, pretty close ballpark, working with Melanie on that. That's the return just for this year. That's not including what we carried over from the previous year. So we do have a large, uh, sum in our account, and like I said, we are working with the business department. And trying to drive that down a little, because we do, we can only have three months of expend, uh, in our account, and we will be over that. Challenges, the upcoming challenges for this year, obviously spending down the revolving account. Uh, we like to, you know, we can't have any more than three months operating expenses, so. We're gonna work with the business department, Melanie and, and Paula, and try to, you know, drive those, um, numbers down a little. Employee labor is always a challenge. Uh, we did increase our salaries this year, starting salaries to be more competitive with everybody else. But, you know, it's been kind of a revolving door, to be honest with you. We have been getting a lot of applicants, which is great. Uh, it's just, we just can't keep, keep them, um, too long in, into, uh, into our program, but, you know. Hopefully next year, you know, we get a new brew, new, new brew in and we can, uh, kind of go from there. Supply chain is always gonna be an issue. Uh, it's been an issue this year. Sometimes it's paper, sometimes it's bread, sometimes it's, you know, chicken. Um, it all, it all depends, um, but I think supply chain is going to be an issue again next year, probably not as bad as it was. It's getting better, you know, over two years ago it was real bad, last year wasn't too bad. So hopefully, you know, we're seeing some progress and, and all that, so hopefully, um, you know, that'll continue moving forward as well. And these are just pictures of some events we've done over the past. I think of Miles, St. Patty's Day, we did some elementary stuff, um. You know, Fall Burke and Johnny Appleseed and, um, the videos, I'm gonna stop at the videos. If you have a chance, if you can go on, this is what the interns that, you know, Michelle brought in. Um, click on these, you know, videos sometime when you have a moment to, to watch these. You know, they worked with Tim Smith, the director, uh, tech director of the TV and the Film Theater. Uh, and, you know, his students, so it was a collaborative, you know, it was real nice that everybody came together and, and, you know, everybody kind of learned from each other. So if you ever have a chance, you know, these are just three videos. How many videos, Michelle, probably about?
One a month.
One a month, so we just picked three videos, so if you have a chance, you know, you can go on and just, you know, check them out and see what you think, let us know. With that said, that's about it for me, and so is there any questions?
I just have one quick question, but first, thanks for everything you guys do. The cafeteria here looks amazing. You guys are a great partner to work with. And at Ginny's, you guys always think of us first, so when you have stuff that you can't give out, so thank you for that as well. Um, on the participation, there's a couple of breakfast numbers that are like significantly higher. Is that, uh, schools that are doing it in the classroom?
Yes, that's breakfast in the classroom. You probably noticed those on Francis Drake.
And Priest Street.
Yeah, and Priest, yeah, both of those, uh, have breakfast in the classroom, and those are very successful programs up there.
Great, thank you.
Name five, uh, the Priest Street Lunch. What do you attribute that to? Is there anything that we can learn from that, uh?
Well, I think the biggest thing for that is, you know, it's a smaller school, um, and I just think it's, you know, where everybody comes down and, and congregates into that small area, it just, you know, kids just like to go through the line and, and just like, just like to eat, and those numbers have increased. Those lunch numbers increase when we brought breakfast in the classroom. Though, because Priest was always hanging around that seventy mark. But once we brought breakfast in the classroom, they got it in the classroom, and, and then we watched the, the lunch numbers just flow up. So that might have something to do with it, you know, the kids, you know, mingling, rehearsing and talking and, and then bringing it down.
That age constantly has that.
Yeah.
I could say it's great food, too, you know? That was my last line.
Um, sir, as, as the, um, government puts more regulations and in terms of healthier options, and I know we talked about this the first time when Obama administration began to start to, you know, they started to push healthier options. And at the time, I asked, well, how do we know kids are eating the food? So I don't know any way other than measuring the barrels, the waste.
But I, I'll be honest with you, there, there was, there was a big waste, you know, um.
And I see it when I go into the food.
Yep.
Ooh, specific action team next month.
I, I think it has to be some way to measure.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely, when, when we get our new interns, and we could definitely have them run a project like that. Michelle, when she was back in two thousand twelve, she ran a waste program. We had her run a waste program when she was an intern. Um, and that, you know, that's what her biggest notice was, you know, the vegetables and the fruit waste. You know, they got twenty-two minutes to eat. By the time they get through the nine, now you're talking, they got eleven, twelve minutes, they're gonna eat their main meal for us. And the little, the younger ones will, they wanna talk, you know, so I mean, that's a challenge. But like, you know, to your point that more regulations are coming, you know, the sodium regulations, the sugar regulations.
Which is all good.
Yeah.
If they're not eating the food, they're throwing away.
Right, exactly, exactly. But we also try to, you know, you know, especially when fruits are in season, we try to, you know, drive those fruits, watermelons, the blueberries, you know, strawberries, the fresh fruits, and, you know, we've met with a, a bunch of students already, and we talked about that. And those are the things they'd like to see, but the challenge is when they're off-season, you know, I mean, it's a little more cost, but, you know, with the supply chain, you know, perhaps we can work something out, and, you know, get those things so they, they will eat that stuff, you know, we want them to eat the fruits.
It, and, and it's for families, it's gotten expensive because all the healthy options are the most expensive. You know, they tell you stick around the perimeter of the store. Oh, yeah, sure.
Right.
But it's the most expensive section. Everything else in the middle is stuff that's killing everybody with sugar and salt.
Absolutely right.
Kind of wean them off and provide others, other healthier options, but sometimes, away something isn't always the answer.
I agree.
The other extreme, call it half healthy.
I mean, there, there's, there's talk, and I'm sure you heard about on the news that we want to pull chocolate milk away now.
Right, yeah.
You know, that, that'll be.
Well, the fat content.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we use the low fat. Yeah.
Mr. Ron?
Question. You said about the supply chain.
Yes.
What part of the supply chain do you find most daunting?
Well, Ron, a few years ago, I would say, you know, um, that just the different foods and the chickens and stuff like that. But now it's just, it's a little different, you know, it's now, it's like, it could be bread one, it could be like a flour issue. It could be, um, paper issue, you know, I mean, there's been times Michelle and I had to run to the store and take all hand of its papers off, off the shelf. So it's getting better. It's not really, I can't say, you know, it's this item, that item. Um, it's kind of sporadic right now.
I, I know I read. How much money are we talking about that would cause the Senate Ways not to?
It, it's a total of around four hundred million. You know, that, that's getting about two hundred million from USDA and getting about, you know, two hundred from, from Massachusetts. That's the ballpark.
Then finally, the last question you, you had, you said you had two dietetic interns.
Yes.
Is there, is there, is there a potential for more?
Absolutely.
Interns.
Yeah.
And what do you project, how many dietetic interns?
Well.
The dietetic interns you have, are they, they're for the, I, I realize they're for the whole school.
Yes.
But do you have them, is there a potential for?
One per school?
One per school or one per, you know, how many per grade? How many per grade, how many for whatever kind of, now these illnesses, whatever, you know, because to make the, because you were saying, it's either you or you know, the healthy foods, you know, uh, go ahead and stop, say something.
Right. Go ahead and stop.
I don't know, I'm waiting. He's taking care of takeover.
Please take over.
All right, go ahead, she's gonna answer. You're right, she's gonna answer you. No, I'm not laughing.
It's very important.
She was gonna, she's gonna answer, she's gaining her thoughts, and she was gonna answer.
I'm a John Professor at EMATWOL, and I coordinated a dietetic internship with Lemmonster Public School, as well as other Chartwell's districts within the state. Um, the reason why we have two per year currently is because I oversee them and I'm just honestly too busy to take on more than one. Um, the other reason is the program is quite small. Um, there's only about eight to ten students in the program at U Mass, and they are kind of dice, spread out throughout the country. Uh, throughout the state, and they have to do different, uh, nutrition programs, so not just in schools. They have to go to hospitals, um, different community centers like WIC programs, so their time here is not really long.
Labor intensive?
Um, it depends on the day, could be. Um, they've moved product all over schools with me, or they've spent time doing computer work. It just depends on what we need that day. Um, could we take more? Perhaps, yes, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
And they also have an agenda. They have.
Yeah, they have competencies.
Who has the agenda?
EMATWOL. Yep. So they have to fulfill specific competencies.
Yeah.
All right, Melissa was next. Go ahead, Melissa. Thank you, Ron.
So you touched on it briefly, and I think we spoke about it a little bit. Um, the younger kids, they like to talk, and their time in lunch is rather short. As we're doing renovations, is there an ability to open up more lines so that kids can get through faster and have more time to eat? And I, personally, I think that's why a lot of the younger kids bring their lunch, is because they want to be able to just sit down and eat and not waste time in line.
I mean, we, we've, um, you know, actually break it down, you know, you know, per class, per lunch, you know, you, you're talking, you got about twenty, thirty kids on each side. Uh, which isn't many, uh, that, that flow through the lines, and they get in there about seven, at the elementary level, about seven to eight minutes, but like I said, it's just, you know, the high school kids, they're about nine to ten, but they finish, you know what I mean? Um, it's just the kids, they just, yeah, it's challenging with the, but to answer your question about multiple lines at that level, no, honestly, no. We, we, we just can't see it, um, you know, because of the entryways and, and the registers, then we have to add another register and another employee. Um, I mean, we could try to talk about it, you know, to, you know, and, and kind of measure the times and stuff, and and we definitely can definitely look into something, you know.
I think a big piece of it, too, is, um, for the child remember, remembering their PIN numbers. And believe it or not, we still have children, we're in, uh, June, who don't remember. So, um, yeah. So sometimes the beginning of the month, like September, October, can be very challenging, getting the children through at the elementary level quickly. Um, that's why we kind of rely on teachers to maybe tape it on their shirt or, you know, wear a bracelet that reminds them. Uh, but typically, over the months, it does improve, and, and our team is, is real, some of them know, most of them know them all by name. And they kind of just get them through quick, as quick as we can, but, um, but yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Women are young, you have no concept of time.
Um, I just want, yep. I just wanted to say, um, you know, I appreciate everything that Chartwell does. You do a lot of other community things. I know you always are very generous, uh, for my agency. Um, you also utilize, which you didn't mention, um, local produce. I know you get like apples from Follin Farms and other local, um, community, um, vendors, um, so that is wonderful that we're supporting our neighbors, um, in our community, so I just wanted to point that out. And, um, having a revolving count to spend down is a good problem and challenge to have, as opposed to not having anything. Um, so I think that's, uh, very good, and so I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to thank everyone, uh, for all their work, and I know, um, all the lunch, uh, staff people work tirelessly, um, and we do appreciate everything they do for our students. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thirteen years is a long time.
Yeah.
No, next year will be fifteen.
Average.
Nice.
Ten years, but.
Oh, is it?
So let's start spending your money.
Yeah.
I know. Well, Melanie yelled at me the other day. She's, I walk in and she's like, stop making money.
Um, and I just want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you, yes.
Um, I feel like I've grown up with you all. I've been an intern since almost ten years I've known Bob, uh, which is crazy. So, um, started as a dietitian, worked my way through the district, um, to become assistant director, and now I'm going on to my very own school district.
Where you're going, you didn't tell us.
Listen.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
Close by, so I'll be here.
She's also getting married.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You go, go big.
Yeah. So, uh, but thank you, and, and you all have been so amazing to me, Paula. I can't thank you enough for all you've done and, and how you've, um, been there for me, so thank you.
Well, good luck. All right, now we're gonna talk about budget transfers, speaking of overabundance and.
No.
And then we'll talk about summer school. How's that? Something, or no?
It is that summer school.
Next, it's after this.
Florence. Hey. As long as everybody's had their cookies, we're ready. All right, so you have year-end transfers in front of you. I have them on my phone. These are cleaning up the end of the year, trying to reallocate funds that we didn't use where we thought we would use them.
What was the total balance, would you say, estimated, rounded up?
That we had to transfer? Um.
Just because people might be watching and they don't know what's in front of us.
That's okay. It was roughly two million.
All right, so we had two million, and the task was to kind of prioritize some of the needs that you still had that you weren't able to address during the school year.
Yes.
And you made a recommendation to the school committee as to what those needs are.
Yes. The largest portion of that is, is transferring out of the salaries lines and into our expense lines to cover that.
And that's not because we didn't fill the positions, it's because in some cases you weren't able to fill those positions.
That's, that's a big piece of it.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we don't need them or not still.
No, 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 we definitely would have rather.
So that's a one-time. Dollar wages to expect.
Exactly, yep. Yep, there's a few informative ones in there at the bottom that I don't need a vote on, but it is just, this is, you know, more for everybody to see that I've also made other transfers that I don't need approval for, just informational. Um, but the two that I need, the, the largest votes, um, are that salary to expense transfer list and then the. and then the, excuse me, in-between salary DESI codes, anything above ten thousand dollars, I need a vote. So that's the second one that needs a vote, which is just seventy-six thousand dollar one.
Does anybody have any questions at all?
No.
I think it's broken down, it's pretty obvious what they are.
So I think you can do it separately or together. Cause there's from salary to salary.
No, I have to be separate.
Okay. I'll make a motion to transfer from the list that we received from salary to expense, to the expense account.
All right. Let's make a motion, a second by Ron. Any questions or comments? If not, signify and usually enter.
Next. And then I'll make a motion to transfer from salaries to the other line in salaries.
All right, the motion is second, okay.
And then the rest are informational.
Any questions? Not? All in favor? Anything else?
We do have warrants, sorry.
How's that?
There's quite a few of them.
At some point we have to go home.
Buckle up. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the following warrants. First from the general fund, warrant thirty-nine, that totals three hundred and six thousand eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Warrant forty, that totals five million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and six cents. Warrant forty-one, that totals seventy-two thousand fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. Warrant forty-two totaling three million two hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and five cents. Warrant forty-three, that totals seven hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Warrant forty-four, that totals two million eight hundred and two thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant forty-five totaling two hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Warrant forty-six totaling three million twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. And warrant forty-seven totaling four hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Okay, you're all motion?
I got some more.
We got lots more.
That is just one page.
From grants and revolving, I've got warrant thirty-nine totaling eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Warrant forty totaling two hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. Warrant forty-one totaling nine thousand three hundred and four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Warrant forty-two totaling seven hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. Warrant forty-three totaling one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and three cents. Warrant forty-four totaling two hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Warrant forty-five totaling seventy thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Warrant forty-six totaling eight hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents. And warrant forty-seven totaling four hundred and twelve thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents.
All right, you heard that?
Very well done. Good job.
Have a second? Motion by Melissa and second by Ron. Any questions, comments? Spent a lot of money in five minutes, less than five minutes.
Give me another five.
Slow it down. It's like going shopping, put it more, put more, put things in more bags so you feel like you got a lot.
You got more stuff, yes.
All right, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. Take a Melanie.
Thank you.
Now, summer school.
This is Renee Costa and this is Laura Van Horn.
Hello.
Hello. It's fair, it is so many things, all good stuff.
Enrichment, yes.
Yes. So we're just here to kind of give you an update of our numbers and what we have. We are definitely going through with offerings. So I'll start off with the summer academy getting to know kindergarten. Our kindergartens, we went through four days of screening with their kindergartens. So now, and Margaret and Andy have put out the getting ready for kindergarten out to teachers, I mean, to students and their families about attending and we'll hopefully have a list for each school. Each school has two classrooms of up to twelve in their classrooms. So they'll, hopefully if parents are listening and they're looking for that, their principal or assistant principal at Priest and Bennett will be informing you this week at this point. We have our getting ready for, I mean, so a summer academy enrichment program for kindergartens to current fifth graders at Fallbrook NJ. Right now we're at two hundred and eighty-three students split and we are still have a waiting list that we're kicking away at. So some people did not, when we closed it down. Some people have been sending us emails. So as we follow up with parents and see if they're still attending and they're in the whole time, we are adding the waitlist. So if there is, if you do still have a need to do that, if they can email myself or Kelly Nelson, then we will add that to the waiting list. And we're hoping to get all students in as we did have a reboot in some of our staff. So we have some more staff added to make our classroom sizes a little bit smaller. Then we have middle school and high school credit recovery, which will, all parents and students will receive a email from Samantha Como, who will register them for their classes. And they'll have also a survey to fill out whether they're going to be in person or online, so the option is there. And that, that will also be sent out in this week. Samantha and I am finalizing it tomorrow and she will be sending that out by the end of this, this week or the beginning of next week. But all parents who do have students who have not, did not make their third grade quarter, was notified already. So it's not gonna be like an aha or a shock that they're being sent the email. And then we have middle school and high school enrichments this year. We have robotics, that's gonna be doing a two-week and that is filled at twenty-five students for the two weeks. And we also have an art enrichment club that's by Ms. Shaven, Saban, who's gonna be doing that. And that's right now at twenty, I kind of overbooked her and she's saying yes. She really didn't want that many, but she gotta help her. So, so she was looking for Ms. Bible to help out, she's on vacation now. Yes. And we also have backup arts doing a, a week's worth and they're doing something for the community. So I'm sure Dean, they'll be reaching out to you to see what they can do to help do a community effort poster or.
Yes.
Slide. So they'll be reaching out for you. I'm also in charge of the creative choices and creative choices, which the camp theme is Camp Out. It's still running from June twenty-eighth to August eighteenth, Monday through Friday, seven AM to five-thirty at Francis Drake. And they are closed, there's a huge waiting list for that. So they're letting them in as people are asking for their vacation time. And the one thing that we are disappointed in a little bit is the CTI camp is not going to run the last week in June. There wasn't enough students that wanted to participate in that. But they did send out a survey and they're looking to see if they can get some instructors for either the last week of July, the first week in August to run it then where it will be a break after school gets out. I think that school gets out the twenty-third to start that camp right away. There wasn't much interest, I think kids will be.
Might be working.
Yeah, working or, it's for eighth graders, so some of them don't have, they just want time off. Sure they're there. So they did get a good response, so they're gonna let me know which week they'll hold that and we will re-advertise that against them. And then the other piece we have going in the special education world is our extended school year. So we're going to be at Lincoln School at Sammaset, Francis Drake and the High School. Running programs for every single grade, running the gamut of everything that we have throughout the school year to prevent any regression of skills. Currently we have three hundred and seven students registered. Even though the active registration has closed, we take late registrations all the way up through because we wanna make sure the students are getting any services that they're entitled to. We're doing academics, we're doing some enrichment of our own. Ms. Costa has been kind enough to share some of the things that have been successful in the more academic-based summer school with the special education summer school. So we're really excited to get that going. Coach Sharp and here is gonna come in and do some adaptive PE, the kids always love that one. And I'm just looking forward to it. We want it to be educational and fun. Yes. So the kids need some of that this summer.
So they wanna be there every day?
Yeah. So just, we, bus lists will go out by the third week in June, the bus company has promised. The middle school and high school bus routes for our program, for the, the program for credit recovery is, they're gonna have stops. But we did add a fourth bus, so it's like JA District, Northwest District, Francis Drake District, Northwest District in town, center of town back, knowing that some of our bus stops are probably a little far away. So we have done relocation and that will be posted to our websites and given to us by the third week in June before school gets out. So they'll have those routes up. And same with our enrichment programs, they will getting email from their teacher in the next week just saying welcome and then they'll get the email with their bus stop and times the week school gets out. It's the lunch that's being served.
The highest participation rates again, they're soaring.
And we do have to thank Chartwell's, they're very good tasks and flexible with their menus and fulfill our requests throughout the summer as well.
We have the rec department in our schools this summer. So it's not a stop.
We tested this a few years ago on the school vacation. We were amazed at the response. And, and then the Spanish American Center has, has programs, a lot of the churches are offering programs, which is all good. And even our conservation agent has been doing like once a week, been doing like tours, you know, hikes through the woods. And once we got them out there though. So we're getting away more of a balance of this, which is, you know, when, you know, you really get caught up in this whole thing. You have, there's nothing else to do, that's right. So just provide some other options healthier and so. And I hope we can do the police academy again this year, that's always what we see.
Yeah, that is.
And so every student should have something to do this summer. Or muller along. We have a choice for.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the minutes.
Make a motion to.
Twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve.
And second, anybody have any questions, errors, omissions? Looks good, all in favor? Those opposed, thank you. We did the finance updates, correct? It was a two-for-one obsolete equipment, we're gonna.
We do have a policy subcommittee meeting, we did meet today briefly. So we will be having another meeting before our next, you know, the same day as our next school committee meeting so that we have a little bit more time to spend on policy. But we did review the corrections that were made around sort of the school committee's goals. And so Chris is gonna just finalize those and then we'll be ready for the next.
Is I had book electronic yet? So we can do a word search and all that?
I don't know.
Is it in there?
I thought it was our handbook.
Student handbook?
Yes.
All right, yeah. Yeah.
Both are, yes.
The rules and regulations and everything are in there and you can search by. And you can go, good. Thank you.
And we do need to review the student handbooks because that hasn't been done in a couple of years. So that's gonna be next on our agenda as well.
All right, and now on to obsolete equipment.
Found more.
Jets and.
Yes. We're still opening up closets, yes, so.
Classics.
A vote for surplus.
Most tend to declare this long list of surplus.
Second it?
All right. Anybody have any questions and interested in any of this stuff? All in favor?
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to new world business.
The reports actually were included in the package, is there an HR or an?
HR enrollment, then motion to adjourn?
I was just gonna say, I just wanted to commend all the youth who spoke tonight. Some of them were very brave in talking about, you know, very personal things, so we appreciate that.
I'll echo that as well. And I just wanted to also note, at our next meeting, I would like to submit a draft of a resolution against the closure of the labor and delivery unit at the hospital. I feel like that has an impact directly on our school system and we should take a stance on it. So I'll write something up and submit it to Chris.
That would be great.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I'd second.
All in favor? Those opposed can stay here and eat cookies and.